Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The day we call this meeting to order, I'm the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas. Today is Tuesday, May 26, 2020. It is 9:00 a.m. And we're in the Central Jury Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street, Granbury, Texas. Today, as always, Dr. Bill Miller here of the Ministerial Alliance has brought with us an esteemed member of our community here, Pastor Alan Laddie of the Generations Church. And we're so pleased to have you. Thank you. Please give us the invitation.
Father, we call on you in the name of Jesus, asking you, Lord, for your continued blessing upon our community and for continued wisdom on our leaders and their leadership. We pray for hearts, heads, ears, and minds to hear one another and help us to provide solutions. And, Lord, those areas that are polarizing, help us to find a third option that is best in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now, will you all join me in placing the allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? Going to the Texas pledge.
I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. Very nice invitation. Thank you very much. Okay. This is my favorite part of Commissioners Court. Today, we have some very special presentations, and we have Ms. Melissa Welber here that's going to do the presentation. And so I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Welber.
Good morning. Our first award today goes to Catherine Frost, and her supervisor is here.
About five-year award, too, also.
Yes, five years. And she was with me during the marriage issue crisis. I appreciate that she did that.
You had to pop back in that one, too?
Thank you. I just want to say, I really appreciate Catherine. She's really helping out in my office. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
The next service award is actually from February. She just wasn't able to attend. And then, of course, March and I know we did not do service awards. So this has been a long time coming for Kristin Hitt. And she, her and her supervisor are here.
About a year and a half, but before that, she was in the district clerk's office. So she's very knowledgeable about a lot of different areas. And she's such a go-getter. She always has a smile on her face, always willing to do whatever it takes to make my office run smoothly. So I'm just very, very thankful that I have her in my office and able to present her with her five-year award.
Good.
Thank you. Thanks, Kristin. The next three are from the sheriff's office that are here today. I'll let the sheriff come up and introduce his next service award recipient.
I want a speech for this one, Sheriff.
Speech? Yeah, that's why I told a couple of them, but I didn't tell this one. But Lynn's been with us, according to this, 15 years, but that's this time. But he started back in the 40s or something.
Eighties, '70s.
No.
Oh, 40s, 80s. No, not your age. Well, yeah, it is your age, too.
So thank you for all your service. Keep the speech down to under 30 minutes.
Hey, Lynn, can you tell us how many sheriffs you work for?
Seven, six or seven.
Yeah. I knew it's been a few.
All of them since 80. Well, Edwin got, I think, elected in 81. I come in 87. So since 81, I've worked for all the sheriffs of Hood County.
Yep. Thank you, Lynn.
Next one, Guy Reynolds. He started out 25 years ago, worked his way up, and been an investigator for me. He's one of my high-tech guys, does the phones and things like that. So thank you for your service.
All right.
And another one with 25 years, Johnny Rose.
Hey, everybody knows this guy.
I guess. I'm sorry.
Well, Judge, when he got his hair cut, I didn't know who he was.
Yeah, just a coat cut. Corona version.
He's kind of sensitive about that.
Yeah, the flat top's dead. I don't even want to talk about it.
Johnny's worked for me as an investigator, lead investigator for all the time I've been sheriff, and started out in patrol many years ago. So thank you for your service.
Thanks, sir.
He liked to cut, though.
Well, thank you. That means a lot.
Ladies and gentlemen, is there anybody that'd like to speak on any of the agenda items today? The sheriff has some public participation forms. If you will fill those out and come up and hand them to our county clerk, Ms. Katie Lang, she will get them up here and hand them to me, and we'll give them at the appropriate time. The next item is the consent agenda. Does any of the commissioners wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Judge, I don't want to pull anything, but I would just like to make a mention of one of the items on there. I think it's well worth recognizing. Under item G, under the consent agenda, library, a couple of donations from the foundation. I don't see anybody here right now from the foundation, but that's David Wells and group that does that. And the foundation is giving two donations to the library, one for $3,000 for equipment, and they're donating another $4,200 for furniture for the library. So I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned. Doctor, do you want to say something on that?
No, but I'm from the foundation board, so.
Okay. And you're part of the foundation, too, aren't you?
Yes.
Yeah. So I just want to give a hand to the donations from the foundation.
Very significant, well appreciated. So thank you for that, Commissioner Cotton. Okay. Other than that, does any woman like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion, okay, motion been made by Commissioner Dever to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero, approving the consent agenda. Okay. Now, we come up here, oh, nothing from, you tell Don Lenny if you see him, that I've been missing him. He's been here at every Commissioners Court meeting except the last three.
All right, I'll tell him.
So tell him when you see him, that I miss him. Okay, so no road operations, but we have Mr. Clint Head today for development. What do you have, Mr. Head?
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. This morning, we got an application that's been accepted for a replat in Benton Water on Lake Granbury, Section 2, Lot 385R1, in Precinct 4. Staff recommends setting a public hearing for this replat July 14, 2020, Commissioners Court.
Any further discussion? Somebody like to make a motion considering that this were.
I'll make a motion, Judge. I'll make a motion that we set Section 2, Lot 385R1 out of Benton Water on Lake Granbury for a replat for the July 14, 2020 Commissioners Court.
Thank you. Commissioner, you.
Hold on here a second.
Second. It's to set a public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Yes, to set the public hearing for July 14, 2020, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero to set.
Thank you.
The public hearing for July 14, 2020. Thank you, Mr. Head. Okay.
I wanted to speak on the presentation number five.
Okay. Okay, financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. You've all received advance information regarding invoices that are to be paid in this court. You've also received a spreadsheet which has payments that are over $10,000. So do you have any questions regarding any of these invoices? Seeing none, I recommend paying the bill, sir.
Okay. You checked them and rechecked them?
Checked them twice.
Okay.
Judge, I'd like to make the motion then to approve the expenditures for May 26, 2020 in the amount of $409,168.86.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the expenditures, amount of $409,168.86. Second, second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Judges and Commissioners, you've all also received copies of monthly reports that our office has received and reviewed. We see no issues with these reports and recommend acceptance.
Everybody turned them in, and they've been received and reviewed?
Yes, sir.
You've got a yes ball of them this time, right?
Everybody looks to be caught up, finally.
Good.
Somebody like to care to make a motion about approving?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Judge, to approve the financial reports received by the auditor for May 1, 2020.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the audit department's review of the reports received by all the individual departments, second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Again, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Kidd. Okay. The first item under miscellaneous is award contract for RFB 2020-005 aggregates for surface treatment for Vulcan Construction Materials as primary vendor. Ms. Nelda Walters, good morning.
Good morning. How are y'all? This was opened on, I think, I had it here, May 18. And the purchasing department, which is a public place, we received one bid, which is not unusual for this particular material. The vendor that we are going to suggest is Vulcan. They have been our vendor for a long time. So it is our suggestion, and Don Lenny agrees, that we should award them again because they're the closest to us as well.
This probably falls under the expertise of Commissioner Dever, doesn't it?
Probably.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, this is a, this is a, for hot mix, cold mix. And also, I guess, we get a crust rock material there, and it's, they're a good company and got, and got a good product. So I'd like to make the motion to, you good?
Yes, I'm good. It's a common thing that they are just about the only vendor we ever get.
Yep. Yep. They're about the only one around that does that. So it's kind of a, kind of a one-time deal. But, yeah, I'd like to make the motion to award the contract, RFB 2020-005 for aggregate for surface treatment to Vulcan Construction Materials as primary vendor.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dever to award the contract to Vulcan Construction Materials as a primary vendor, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Walters.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Item number two, discuss and take appropriate action regarding transferring the area in Annex 3 formerly used by information technology to purchasing slash audit to use for inventory tagging and storage. We have both ladies here today. Okay, Ms. Kidd and Ms. Walters.
Good morning again. Judge Commissioners, this has been something we've been trying to move forward to for a long time between our two departments. It came to a head, as you would say, last year during our audit. We had items that were not in the correct fiscal year because of when we got the information on them. That created a problem. So to alleviate that problem, we need a central location to receive taggable items. Therefore, we need the storage to start with before we can move forward. IT has vacated the building. They don't need any of these rooms, and we would like to co-own them, per se, so that we can move toward the next agenda item, which is a policy regarding tagging inventory. So before we can tag it, we need a place to put it. So we need this room, and we're asking your permission to assign it to both of us.
Which rooms is it, Becky?
It's going to be, the offices in the back.
Where Jackie had his office?
Yes, sir. Those, and there's a couple in the hallway. And we will, if people need those, they won't have to come back to court, per se. We'll just let them use them so that you're not, every five minutes, somebody's not coming back to court, well, I want that room, or I need this room, it's not big enough. We're just going to take over anything that IT had and use it accordingly because we know health department may need a little more room. So we're going to try to work with whoever needs some room in that building.
It's like a good deal to me, and I guess IT, oh, and you're up there, you approve of that, too, don't you? You were shaking your head in agreement, did I see?
Yeah, yeah, everything's good. We've been out of there for a long while. The only room that we've really got storage in is our old server room, and we've already talked with auditing and purchasing about still keeping stuff in there. So it's mainly just utilizing our old offices and our old tech room. So we're 100% A-OK with it.
Good. Boy, I love that cooperation. I've got three different departments, all in agreement. Hallelujah. I guess you did that, Pastor Laddie. Thank you very much for coming down here. I appreciate that. Okay. All right. All right. Do I hear a motion regarding the Annex 3 area formerly used by IT?
Judge, I'd like to make that motion, discuss and take appropriate action regarding transferring the area. And Annex 3 formerly used by information technology to purchase and audit, and they will be in control of, if somebody happens to need that room, they will lay the olive branch out and let people use the room. Everybody's going to work together on this, right?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's made by Commissioner Dever, and to use the IT formal room so that purchasing and audit and IT and everybody else is in agreement so they can properly tag and inventory all of the equipment, second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is to consider and take appropriate action on new policy in regard to inventory.
Y'all got the early version, and I ask you to replace it with this because I didn't realize the updates were not coming in.
It didn't change again, did it?
No.
Okay.
It's no secret that we have trouble getting departments to turn in their sheets when they receive items that need to be tagged. It is in our policy manual currently that it is their responsibility. But oftentimes, they get things, they forget to turn them in, and then we go back with our actual physical inventory at this time of the year, and we find many, many items that we knew nothing about being there. And that enhanced the problem we had with the audit. The only thing that I can think of is we need to have a centralized receiving, not purchasing yet, but that is in the cards probably sometime in the future. But centralized receiving will mean that anything that is needing tagged comes to us first. The receiving departments won't get it. It will come to us, we will receive it there, we will open it, we will tag it, we will make sure to check the order to make sure everything is there. And then, once it's tagged, we will get it to the departments that have originally ordered it. Now, there are going to be exceptions. This is going to be a work in progress. I can't cover every scenario, you know, in a policy. But I can tell you, we'll work with the departments as much as we can. I think it's something that's really needed. I actually proposed to do this two other times in my tenure here, two years after I came and about four years after I came. But it was involving purchasing as well, doing centralized purchasing. If this will help my inventory, and that is my goal, is to get it to be as accurate as I can, I would appreciate this policy being passed.
It makes common sense, Nelda. I mean, you get a piece of equipment in, somebody grabs it, goes out and fill with it, and they forget about it. So before it goes out in the field, it gets tagged, gets a number on it, and it's easier for you and for everybody to keep up with. Makes common sense.
Hopefully, it will to everyone, and they'll understand that I'm not trying to take control of their stuff. I just need it tagged, and that's all I care about.
A tag and release program.
It is a tag and release program.
Okay, good. I'm familiar with that. Okay.
A lot of the, a lot of the stuff, and I commend IT. They tried to come up with an idea last year to help because a lot of it is technology items. And they were willing to try and take on the tagging themselves. And just because their daily work and stuff, it's just not been optimum for them or us. And so we talked to them in length a couple of weeks ago, and when I told them what I wanted to do, they were very relieved. They said they were more than on board with it. So it's something we've been working on, you know, behind the scenes, hoping to get it done.
Think you're going to need any additional personnel to handle this project?
Not at this time. We're going to try and do it with just what we have. My staff is committed to making it work.
Good attitude.
Yep.
God, we need to bring Pastor Laddie down here more often, Dr. Miller. Okay. Does anybody care to make a motion regarding the inventory tagging policy? Effective date of May 26, 2020, is presented by Ms. Nelda Walters.
I'll make that motion.
A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Three times the charm.
Appreciate it.
All right. Okay. That brings us to item number four, consider and take appropriate action to approve promoting a deputy Step 10, salary of $58,754, to investigator Step 9, $59,905. We have the illustrious Chief Deputy Steve Smith to explain this to us.
Judge Commissioners, thank you. We're in the process of filling an investigator's position that was left vacant by investigator Stafford when he moved over to the Fire Marshal's Office. Through the selection process, we have selected a deputy to take that position. As per Commissioners Court policy, if it's above a Step 6, it has to come before court. The deputy that was chosen for this is currently at a Step 10. In order for him not to take a pay cut, to take a promotion, I'm proposing that he go to a Step 9 investigator, which is a difference of $1,151 a year, $44 a payday.
Step 8, he would have took a cut in pay.
Step 8, he would have paid a pay cut.
So 9 is the only thing he could have went to without taking a cut in pay.
That is correct.
I appreciate you coming by and explaining that to us before court.
Absolutely.
It's common sense. I mean, we do a promotion for somebody, we don't want to give them a cut in pay to give them a promotion. So, and it's, it's dollars on the payroll, so.
Absolutely.
Steve, you told me to replace the deputy that you're going to replace. You're going to keep the money.
Oh, yeah, we won't hire a deputy Anna Step 10.
When I, I know, what I looked at, you could go up to a Step 6, and it would still be under your.
I could, but I highly doubt we would hire one Anna Step 6 either because I've got guys that have been there three or four years that are Step 3 or 4 or 5. It just wouldn't be fair to them to hire somebody and hiring what they make. So we'd probably hire somebody, and if they've got good experience, maybe up to a Step 3.
That'd probably be a savings of several thousand dollars going that route.
There's going to be a savings in that.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
We're all good, and there's no increase, overall increase in the budget.
Good.
Yeah, savings in the budget in reality.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Effective Monday, June 1st.
I don't think anybody.
This coming Monday, yes.
I don't think anybody should take, take a pay cut to get promoted.
I agree.
I'll make the motion then to approve promoting a deputy, excuse me, a deputy Step 10 at $58,754 to an investigator Step 9 at $59,905.
Cotton has made the appropriate motion for going from a deputy Step 10 to an investigator Step 9.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the request from Sheriff's Department to apply for the BVP grant for 17 ballistic vests for the cost of $15,000. Sheriff Dudes.
Judge Commissioners, this grant has been out there for about 20 years. So every year, I come to court to try to ask for a few more. Way this grant works is the county has to purchase it, and then after I submit the invoice, they reimburse 50% of that. So it helps get some of the money back. And this isn't just for the sheriff's office, this is for any county law enforcement. So constables, the DA's office, and sheriff's office, fire marshal's office, so whoever needs it. So it looks like we got some in past grants that haven't closed out yet, have some money there, so we're still good. And so what I'm asking for today is to approve 17 new vests at a cost of $15,000. And those, that $15,000 is, GT Distributors has state contract prices in there, and that's who we've been going through for years. So that's what I'd ask you to approve today, is 17 ballistic vests at the cost of $15,000 and through this grant, once I submit those, once they're ordered, we receive them, then I would submit that invoice, and then the county would get 50% back. So this would be a Fund 55 deal to approve the money out of that.
Okay.
We have about $10,000 unspent in our social right now.
Yes, there is some unspent. It doesn't hurt to ask for more, and we haven't spent the money yet. But like I said, I want to make sure we can cover constables, DA's office, fire marshal's office, and my deputies, too, to make sure everybody's covered.
Are these a replacement for?
Yeah, the way the vests work is the federal agency that puts the standards on those ballistic vests, they only guarantee them for five years. So after five years, we have to take them out of service and buy new ones. So I don't want to performance test one to see if it'll last longer, but.
No.
That's, that's what they've always stuck.
That'd be Lynn's job, wouldn't it?
Yes. I'll second that motion, Commissioner Dever. Lynn, do you want that job? It's sort of like a test pilot. It's kind of a promotion-like.
Oh, I'll pass this time.
Okay.
But once they are used, then we got to take them out of service anyway, so that kind of defeat the purpose.
So are we asking for five more thousand above the 10, or are we asking for 15?
Well, I was asking for 15,000, plus we have that other money in there, so.
And I also would like permission to, there is $1,301.85 that was allocated to Constable Precinct 4, and that will be utilized. I can move that either into miscellaneous or add it to, well, it needs to go in miscellaneous, it's a separate deal. That was for SRO officers, equipment for them, and we'll prove vest will part of that. And that will not be utilized. So that's $1,300 I can move someplace else. But how do you want me to do it? I can budget 15 million, take it out of miscellaneous, and then as, I'm sorry, 15,000.
Those are nice vests.
Yeah, that's a tank.
We'll get some tanks, but how do you want to do this? Because when we get the reimbursement, it goes back in the Fund 55. I mean, it's just an ongoing thing. You know, I'd like to use up the old money first, and then move on to the new. And we seem to do that. So if you want to add 15,000, we'll get it back promptly soon.
Yeah, I didn't want to come up short and have to come back to the court. So, yes, we'll have 25. So yes, we'll have 25,000 that we could spend towards that from the past grants, and we'll use that up. And if we don't use it, then it's, we're not going to, if we don't buy one, it's not costing any money. It's just the approval that we can if we need that.
So we get 7,500 back out of the 15,000?
Once I put in those invoices, yes. Once we actually order them, so. And we haven't spent anything yet.
Okay. Well, 17 vests for $7,500. That's a good deal. And we always need some vests. So somebody care to make a motion?
I don't know if I can word this right. I guess just make a motion to allow, take appropriate action, approve the request from Sheriff's Department to apply for the BVP grant for seven ballistic vests for the cost of $15,000.
And that's truly all I'm doing, is applying for the grant.
Yeah.
So they can disapprove it too, but they never have. But that's all I'm doing, is applying for that grant.
But you have to spend the 15,000 to get the 750 back, right?
I'll get 50% back of whatever we do spend up to that 15,000 to get up to 7,500 back.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Dever to allow the sheriff to take appropriate action to apply for the BVP grant for the 17 ballistic vests for the cost of $15,000, and to get back $7,500 to work with Becky Kidd to get the money from wherever.
Yeah.
Okay. And then seconded by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's bring us to item number six. Consider and take appropriate action to approve the memorandum of understanding between E wrath County and Hood County to allow our K-9 to respond to help E wrath County Sheriff's Office when needed as a tracking dog slash drug detection dog. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge Commissioners, this was generated based on, and we should have already been here, done this, but we had an incident that E wrath County had a possibly burglary suspect in a house over at Bluffdale, and they called and said, can we send somebody? Ended up, they'd been long gone for a while, so the person did not go over there. But we figured we needed to get a memorandum of understanding together for the future. So this is going to be signed by me and the sheriff out at Matt Coats in E wrath County, and their Judge, Judge Compost, and Judge Massingill here, be in place for the future if needed. I sent this to the county attorney. He had one correction. It's not going to cost anybody anything. It's just a memorandum of understanding.
I think it's a good idea, Sheriff, because they do help us out on our female prisoners also. So it's kind of a good relationship between us and E wrath County to maybe keep this going for them, help them out when they help us out.
It's good to help the surrounding counties because they might come to our aid, and they do all the time, so.
Yep.
That motion, Commissioner...
Yes, sir. I'll make that motion. Consider and take proper action to approve memorandum of understanding between E wrath County and Hood County to allow our K-9 to respond to help with E wrath County Sheriff's Office when needed as a tracking dog, drug detection dog.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Any further discretion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Again, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to item number seven. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve a mural painted on the east-facing wall of the children's room at the Hood County Library, paid for by Friends of the Library.
Yes.
Good morning.
Thank you. Gentlemen, my passion is reading, and specifically sharing the sheer joy of it. As a librarian, most of my adult life, I can't think of anything I would rather do than share that ability and the accessibility of reading materials. The new library has been open for a year now, and patrons have been very complimentary. You know, they like how new and clean and bright it is. We get new furniture sporadically. So again, you know, more delight coming along the way. But one of the things we don't have after a year is something on the walls. And the children's room specifically really needs some life, some color, you know, something to make the children want to be there and joyful, besides the books. Now seems to be an appropriate time, since they can't really be in there anyway, for us, I mean, they can walk in soon, we hope, to get books, but they can't really relax and read. And so I propose that we paint a mural on the most obvious wall, the one that you see when you walk in. There's a painter in town who is a sculptor as well as a painter, and she's very talented. She and her husband made the fireman statue in the Jim Burks Firefighters Memorial Park. And I've sent you copies of her resume, her quote, very reasonable price. Friends of the Library have agreed to pay for this. And although I sent you a little picture, here is the little bit larger sketch of what she is proposing, and we all would love to see on the wall.
Did you turn around and show that to the crowd?
It goes ceiling to floor and wall to wall. And not only is it the tree, but the little butterflies writing words, and the bookworm, and, you know, all in all, it's a delightful picture. So, since Friends of the Library have already graciously agreed to pay for it, what I need from the Commissioners is your stamp of approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It would be exciting for all, and beautiful, and just a really good choice, I believe.
Do they know how long it'd take to paint that?
No, we haven't really talked about the timing. She's ready and willing as soon as we're ready. And the cost that she is asking, which is again, very reasonable, includes the paint, you know, time, effort, everything.
I like her work. She's very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Judge, I'll make that motion to approve a mural painted on the east-facing wall of the children's room at the Hood County Library, paid for by the Friends of the Library.
And I second that motion. That's a great motion. So the motion is made in second to approve the mural painted on the east-facing wall of the children's room at the Hood County Library, made by Commissioner Cotton, seconded by Judge Massingill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, this takes us to item number eight. Consider and take appropriate action to approve requests of the U.S. Board on Geographic Names for Recommendation About a Proposal to Change the Name of Bowser Lake in Hood County to Lake Arthur. Is there anybody here that's going to speak on that particular item?
Judge, the form that you got, that was supposed to be on this item? Oh, there it was. It's going to be on the licensing on the...
Okay.
Judge, for me, I really don't, I don't know enough about this to, for me to make a decision on this.
Alicia, did you have some?
Yeah, I wasn't able to get in touch with the people who sent it, so maybe when they make what you tell them, I can. I've tried to contact them to see if they want to come and speak on it, but I haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay. Okay, other than...
Would somebody object to it, I guess? Maybe the Bowzers might be objective. Is that what you're thinking? Might be.
Have you tried to make contact with the Bowser family? I know that, is that who you tried to contact, Alicia?
The geographical department.
So you recommend table it until you can get some more information for us to consider?
Yeah, I think that they may not want to come and speak on it.
Okay. Okay.
Judge, I'll make the motion to table item eight.
Okay. I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Commissioner White to table item eight about the name change of Bowser Lake to Lake Arthur, seconded by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero to table item number eight. Hey, this brings us to item number nine, and it's to consider and take appropriate action regarding the proposed purchase of communication radios for all Hood County constables. And we've got two of the illustrious ones here today. Chad Jordan and Delton Thrax.
The last session, Commissioners' Court, we came before you, asking to be included in the purchase of handheld radios for all of our units, all of our officers. We put together our package, which we just passed out to you, consisting of handheld radios and mobile units, building all of our vehicles. What we are asking the Commissioners to consider is the purchase of handheld units. And that's broken down by precincts. So we have one for Constable, and one for any other employee, whether it's a full-time position or part-time position, reserve officer, working with the constables. So we're looking at 10 handheld units versus 12, and we're looking at seven mobile radios to go in each of the vehicles, presently be assigned to the constable's office. Now, on your quote that's before you, quote number 1969, those are the seven mobile units. These are all Harris radios. This is a better unit than what we have in Kenwood's, and a less expensive unit than the Kenwoods. What we are looking at there is all mobile units and all equipment necessary to put those in each of the vehicles, and that has a grand total of $43,709.80 for just the mobile units. On your next quote of 1964, you're on 1964, those are the handheld units, and we're looking for 10 handheld units. You look at the first price of 1998, that's the purchase price for just the radio, including all the accessories. We were informed Friday that Harris has a promotion going on presently, and those are being reduced by $250 per unit. So our actual cost from now till the end of June would be $1,748 per handheld unit, with all the accessories that go along with it, and programming for both handheld and mobile units. We're looking at a total purchase price for the handhelds of $35,937. If you add all of that up in the trunking for each unit, mobile and handheld, we're looking at a total cost for all of the radios, handheld and mobile units, of $95,846 versus the original figure we would get of $107,000. So with these units being on a promotional right now, it's saving us a substantial amount of money per handheld units, as just for the handheld units and not the mobile units. And the Harris units would be, item number two, is a list of qualms, mobile units, which are quite more expensive, if you have your Harris, and then further down the line, Kenwood's. So Harris is a much better unit, both mobile-wise and handheld-wise, at a less price than what the Kenwood's presently cost. So we're looking at a total of more than $95,000 to completely outfit each office with a mobile unit and handheld units.
Delton, I'm kind of confused here. On both these sheets, it still has 12 on them.
Yes, sir. We went back and revised that. I mean, we're asking 12 handheld units versus 10 handheld units.
Okay.
And that's two handheld units for three of the precincts, and four handhelds for precinct four with full-time people in the reserve that he presently had on board. So that gives us a total of 10 handheld units versus 12.
Okay, so. Chad, you have a, you have a one full-time person?
In the upcoming budget, I'll have one full-time. I have a reserve that works every week. He comes in and works consistently. And I have another one that's going to come in and work consistently. And other reserves come in and they work for free.
So that gives us radio communications for every vehicle and every officer, potentially every officer that's presently assigned to each precinct.
I think you've got reserves in the other precincts also, don't you? And you're going to get radios for those? Okay.
One for the Constable, one for his reserve.
Right. Where do the units stay when the reserve's not in the office?
Comes in to work that shift, he'll be assigned a handheld radio, and when he finishes doing his business, this will charge him, it's secured in the office. They don't take them home.
Yeah, one issue I've heard about is synchronicity, I guess, for lack of a better term, with the sheriff's frequencies. Is that, does this help with that?
What these units are, these are all Trivane, so that gives us the capability of talking not only to the Sheriff's Department, Fire Marshal, DPS, other state agencies, and other counties around the trunking system. And the Trivane will give us that, plus the ability for encryption. So the encryption gives us the ability to talk to Grandberry PD, which we can presently. We have no communication with DPS, Fire Marshal. So this will correct all of that, so we will be able to talk to not only people within our county, but we can talk to people outside and other state agencies, like the state Fire Marshal, the emergency networks. We have a disaster every time, then we'll have capabilities of talking to them around the state. So handheld units, mobile units will be Trivane, and with the encryption capabilities, we'll be able to have communication availability with everybody around that we need to talk to.
Do the sheriff's cars have these mobiles in them right now?
They have, I believe, handheld and mobile units that are newer units, whether or not they are the Harris or Kenwood, I'm not sure. Just...
I knew, I know we've been discussing a sort of Fund 55 for buying new radios. I didn't know if that was going to be part of, y'all were going to be part of that too?
You know, we came in last court session and asked to tack on to their pricing and stuff, and the same thing goes with us. Our units that we're asking you to consider are better units and of less expense per unit, and the Sheriff's Department, Fire Marshal, anybody who presently has a radio to use the same figures we have is available. So it goes across the board.
So you're not, currently, you're not able to communicate with, for instance, City of Grandberry?
No, sir, we haven't. I've been able to for over a year. When they went to their radio system, they had encryption, and our radios do not have the penalty for the encryption in our handhelds or our mobiles. We don't have that forward in the configuration, so we're not able to communicate except through dispatch. If we have a situation, we'd have to call it to dispatch, do calls to the city, the city responds, and they respond back to us.
Does the sheriff...
That's a delay in time of response.
So the sheriff can't talk to the city either?
Sheriff talks to them.
His radio's having encryption. He, they've been upgraded, had encryption in, and now he has to be able to speak to them.
Their dispatcher work, dispatch for both the Sheriff's Department and Grandberry PD, so they have, it's a little bit better there. But we have to go through dispatch to the city, the city talk to dispatch to us. That's a time delay.
Could you update your quote? The ones that I see here is seven mobile and 12 portable, but I hear you say 10.
Yes, sir. We have 10 on it. We just got that, those numbers.
Okay. Let's make sure we get that one in the minutes that we're, if we approve it. It's 10, not 12. Okay.
We're asking for 10 versus 12 handhelds and seven mobiles.
Yep. Okay. Seven mobiles, they go into four constables pickups and in three cars?
What is that, what is that number? Final number?
The total for both handheld, mobile units, and trunking for every unit is $9... The total for both handheld, mobile units and trunking for every unit is $95,846. We'll correct all those figures so it reflects appropriately.
Y'all check with Becky on the availability of any funds? Or what's the proposal on that?
We have not approached the auditors' office to see the availability of funds. We've asked at the last pledge hearings. We used a workshop on Fund 55.
We put that together. All those things were presented. Numbers were counted and placed by the auditor on that so that we knew what the county was looking at. And that was in the fall of last year when we did that. And those were brought before the court, and no action was taken on it. And now that communications have changed, and this was the upgrade that's happened within the county, we have no communication. We're asking to take action on our portion of it that was submitted in. Out of Fund 55.
Becky, have you got the money? That's good.
That wasn't weak, was it?
That wasn't real strong, but you did say yes.
I could barely hear you up here, Mr. Kidd.
Delton, is it possible for right now, if we approve the handhelds until we go to our capital for the mobiles? Will the handhelds be able to allow y'all to talk to the city?
The handhelds will be an improvement over our capabilities present that the commissioners' court issued to approve the handhelds. And as far as later, here, the court has for the mobiles, we'll do what the court asks us to do.
I'm not sure how much money we have in Fund 55.
And that's what last October, last fall, we were all working on that own capital project to plan all that out. And if we string along and piecemeal and stuff and buy radios out of here and there, yeah, we don't want to worry about it either, other than we can't communicate. So what does it take for everybody to kind of get on the same page, all the different agencies, constables? Agencies collaborating together and working together to make those things happen?
Grants, stuff, where those grants become available. Everybody has access. Everybody has prior knowledge of it. Working together on all the grants that might be out there, applying for them all together at the same time, working together on types of radios being used by all the agencies across the county and surrounding counties. So we are all in the same general neighborhood, and our radios are compatible with everybody else. So we can talk to them. We can use the encryptions to be able to talk to people we can't talk to presently. Communicating among ourselves and other agencies to get everybody on the same page is what we would need to work towards. There's grants out there that come out annually, where everybody needs to know about it at the end of time, so we can apply for them, help cut some of the costs off of the counties, working with the other surrounding counties, other agencies, even the state agencies to ensure that whatever radio system we come up with is compatible with them, that we can access them with power from these emergencies. It's a coordination effort.
The radios we received last time for the city van radios, as soon as we got them, the city went encrypted, and we couldn't even talk to them then. So the radios we got that were brand new didn't even work to talk to the city. Now, last year's budget, I went and spent the money out of my budget to buy the programming software for the radios we got off of a grant years ago to make them last. And now the support's gone out of those last year, or actually the year before. So now these, we cannot upgrade or use them anymore. And now that we've gone up to 700, these don't work at all for that purpose. So we keep trying to find ways of how to string along and wait and try and make things work. But the question becomes, when do we put everybody on the same page? When do we put all the agencies that we have in the county where they need to be communicating?
This is a question probably for the city. I see the mayor in pro temps here. I don't know if y'all can ask this question. Are y'all going to change again anytime soon? Or if we do this, and y'all change again?
How long we don't communicate?
Yeah. I mean, what if they change again in two or three years, and we spend all this money? I mean, I guess, I don't know how we can coordinate with the city and the sheriff and the constables all together to make sure that somebody does make a change, we're all on board on this.
By having the triban, you've got all three bases covered. City stays on the same level they're at. We're good. We got the AES encryption that the city uses and the state uses. And then also these would have DES that the sheriff's office is using for encryption their channel.
But the handhelds would allow you to talk with the city with what you're proposing? Because I thought Roger was proposing something that was going to take in the whole county, all law enforcement?
Yes, that's what I put with the capital budget. And that was going to include the constables and the fire departments, sheriff's office, all of that. So that hasn't happened yet, like Constable Jordan said. So we're just doing the best we can with getting money here and there. So those handhelds, those are the ones that you approved two weeks ago. Same thing, they're tribans, so PHF, UHF, 700 and 8 Hz. Ray Wilson and myself, we started piecemealing this stuff together quite a few years ago, got repeaters up and running, but then people don't have the radios to start talking through that in most cases. So like, the question was asked, who can talk to the city? My patrol guys can talk to the city because of those handhelds. Not all of my people can talk to the city. So that's what we're trying to get up to that other level with those. But we haven't got there yet. The 700 frequencies were, I still need some for my vehicles. But that plan was to encompass fire departments, sheriff's office, constables, any emergency services.
Do the mobiles have more range than the portables?
Yes. They're more powerful, they have more range. So like at Live Pan, Crescent area, some of the remote areas down at precinct two, down by the river, those things, those radios would work there. And again, these mobile triban radios are less expensive than the Kenwood triban radios. And whereas Kenwood, you stack three boxes and you have one head in. Well, there's been talk about, we'll just buy another smaller radio. Well, we can't stack, keep stacking radios because some of our vehicles, you only have room for two radios or one head. Well, this will put the one radio in there that does everything and stop just filling up space.
Harris was what you were looking at, same brand, right, Sheriff?
Those handhelds, yes. But who are those?
These guys here.
All the constables with those handhelds. And what I've been utilizing as we perform is Kenwood, single band, 700s, just because of the cost. But with that, it'd be great to have the triban, a lot more money.
And these are the quotes also that Constable Jibbin had presented whenever we did our budget workshop, or the Capitol Outlay Workshop. She presented the tribans and the savings and the benefit of having those.
What we've seen is the quotes that we had provisionally from the Kenwoods versus the Harris handhelds. The Harris are much better quality and is coming in cheaper now that they have a promotion going on until the end of June. They're even less expensive than we originally looked at. And we just got this information on Friday. I don't know if the sheriff had gotten the same information. But the triban handhelds from Harris originally were like $1,998. Now they're $250 per unit less just for the handhelds. So we're looking at a cost of $1,748 per unit without all the accessories that we're all looking at, probably the programming, trunking, batteries, charging units, and everything.
These handhelds were about $3,600, what we approved for the sheriff, I think, the other day.
We get all the encryption and everything into them there. They're more expensive than just the base radio.
But now that they're on our promotion, we can all get them in a ratio to get it at a less expensive price. If we went for the Harris versus a Kenwood, then Kenwood's are more expensive. And Harris will prove us, prove better for us.
Yeah, I don't mind buying, or, I'm just speaking for myself, buying the 10 handhelds right now, and then we'll address the mobiles in the Fund 55 or in our budget hearings.
Again, our offices and the sheriff are willing to work and do whatever is necessary to get us better communication and not spend all the funds at the county. Because of that, we can come back later and ask for additional units when the time is appropriate, if we're willing to work with it, or if the court asks us to do it.
If you could only have one or the other, but not both, would you rather have portables or mobiles?
We'd rather have, if we have to have one versus the other, of course, the portables because, you know, when we're outside of the vehicle.
He can with you.
It's just like, you know, our reserves, everybody that comes in, we assign on the body camera and the radio and everything. We have to have that communication and that safety factor.
How much were your 10 mobiles, I mean, your 10 handhelds, Chad?
Quote 1971, if we divided that up.
$35,700, is that right?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, nine thirty-seven.
That's more than that. That's not enough.
Forty-six thousand. We'll have to recaptivate the trunking part of it. Ten units, we'll ballpark at $47,000 for 10 handhelds.
Oh, with all the additions?
All the accessories and stuff that go with it.
Becky, can we get a more affirmative answer from you, like two and 10? Is that better for you?
Economically, is it better to wait on some of them? That's what portion I don't understand is if they're going to eventually need the mobiles and the portables, and we're going to give them the mobiles and the portables, I want to know what the difference is, doing it now or waiting until next year's budget? I don't get that.
I have a plan.
Pardon?
I have a plan. So we need to talk to the sheriff and the city chairman and see what we can do.
Because I think they're asking the court for both, and I'm not, I don't think we're turning them down. It sounds like we want to wait on some of it. But I defer to the auditor on that, if we get the money now, or would we save money by waiting?
Well, if you're going to save money, but $200 per unit, I'd say do that now. Is that what the other one, that's a handheld unit?
Constable Jibbin, do you have something you want me to add?
Yes, sir. I already have it in my truck. I prefer the mobile one. And the problem is, if we don't get the mobiles now, we're going to have to ask them because we're still not going to have the communication control. So I'd like to go ahead and do the Kenwood. Because we just have to come back.
Well, that's why Bonnie and Clyde were so successful. They could outrun the other cops, but they can't outrun radios. Can't outrun radios. So I'm all in favor of getting good communication, especially with Grandberry, and, you know.
Calls for 10 handheld units presently is $47,027.
I'd like to, if you approve that, to make it $47,100. Thanks.
That's that 1971 quote. Quote number 1971, right?
Well, they gave us.
1971, he changed it to 1748 instead of 1998.
I don't have a number that jives, so I'm just trying to ask. I'm asking.
Pick and choose which one is it. I'd like to have a new quote.
Twelve.
Yeah, I think that's money. I just, there's no sense in waiting.
Can I question on that? We'll have that to you later this afternoon for the $42,000 they put on the 10 handhelds. We'll have that corrected quote. It's already been requested and on its way.
I need to copy it.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's $47,100.
Make sure you tag them.
I will tag them.
All right.
We'll come to my office first.
So Becky, you going to work with the constables and the sheriff's office and seeing?
And we will. My plan, my goal, is to have everything they need by October 1st. That's my plan. Everything the sheriff needs, fire marshal, anything on this that they need to get where they need to be by October 1st.
Well, you've been sitting there figuring there. So what's that number? Do you have a number for us? I'm kind of confused, and I think we're all up here. So give me the number.
I won't go into great detail because it involves the 2021 budget, which we're working on, which more papers and things change. But it's something that I'm working on. And Roger over there, who knows that, sir? Right, Roger?
Yes.
Just agree.
So he's aware of that. And included in that was this, all this too. So it's something that he and I have been working on, and we're going to continue to work on it. And the plan is to have everything they need by October 1st.
That work for y'all?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
I got you.
All right. Because I'm all in favor of radios, and that's good communication. That saves lives and quickness is everything and good response time. So what are we going to do? Table this until?
No. I'll try to make a motion and see if it'll work.
Okay.
The handhelds, that will help the projects stay a little more whole. And we'll happy with the handhelds, and we'll get the rest October 1st. And there, you guys planning that?
Well, I got a, I'm still confused because the old quote, I've got, if my math is correct, I got from last court, the handhelds were $3,3,592.72 apiece.
Per unit?
Now they're like $47,000, I mean, uh, $4,000.
$4,700 apiece now.
So I'm not.
I mean, I think you're, I apologize. The trunking, Johnson County's on trunking, the Harper County's on trunking, and it allows those to be programmed.
I'm not against this. I'm just trying to get a number for, I'm savvy in all this. I mean, I'm far getting y'all radios, but, you know, it's.
The trunking program costs $1,100 per radio.
Right. So right now, Chad, are y'all good with the 10 radios at the $47,100 in DeWing and Dresden? I'll make the motion to approve the handheld radios of $47,100 for all the county constables.
And handhelds?
Handhelds.
I'll second that. A motion's been made by Commissioner White to get 10 handheld radios in the amount of $47,100 for all the constables, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Is that correct, Becky? Is that what y'all want? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zeros.
Aye.
Good. Okay. Now, this brings us to item number 10. Discuss and take appropriate action to deposit $30,000 into capital assets from GTL. These funds will be designated for use by the sheriff's department. Okay, you're smiling, Becky. I like that. So you're always willing to deposit money, I know.
I like the money. This is from tablets, including.
Well, this is from, the $30,000 is from the contract that was renegotiated last year for an update to the GTL phone system in the jail. This year's contract that we entered into, the court entered into, included tablets. We're going to get $30,000 a year from GTL. So this is our first, this is our 2020 payment for GTL. So 2021, we'll have $30,000 more.
This is a good deal. And that jail commissioner, that inspector that we met with a few weeks ago, that the sheriff passed 12 times in a row, 12 consecutive years in a row, these iPads helped really a lot with the prisoners, you know? And then we still make money. The county makes money off of it, and it really helps with the discipline of all the inmates. And that inspector really did compliment Eric Turberville and all the officers and the sheriff on how well behaved the prisoners were. So I think this is a great deal. It's worked out very well, hadn't it, Sheriff? So I think this is a great deal, and it's worked out very well, hadn't it, Sheriff?
There's a lot more options with the communication, more than just the phone conversations in their friends and family, so.
Wow.
Learning, educational material, music, different things like that.
Okay. Well, I think this is kind of a no-brainer, that we want to accept the money or deposit it and keep that contract.
Projects and Sheriff Bellin.
Okay.
Just going to help me in the end, if he wants to utilize this money to buy these radios while they're at a discounted price, let's jump on there.
Okay, I move to take appropriate action to deposit thirty thousand dollars into capital assets from G T L.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sheriff, and biscuit. Okay. Item number 11. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve iTicket agreement with Net Data. Who's speaking on that? J P Four and Commissioner Eagle. The iTicket agreement.
Judge, I put that on the agenda, and I thought Judge Tuggle was going to be here for this. Judge Gwynne, would you like to make a comment on this, please?
Thank you. Last week, commissioners, I came in and spoke with each of you on this. Now, not all the judges, I'll, I'll start off with not all the judges are on board with using this. As I explained before, that this is a, where the D P S tickets are automatically downloaded each day into the state system, and then our software server, which is Net Data, would be, they would download that and then upload it into our system each morning, and we'd be able to pull those tickets immediately instead of going over to the D P S office to pick those tickets up. This costs the county two dollars per ticket that's inputted. It's only done on the D P S tickets, not on sheriff's tickets, not on the Brezner River Thorne, not on a game board ticket, none of that, although we do charge that already in the transaction fee for every ticket. Every violation that is, is written in the J P court as a criminal offense comes in and has that transaction fee as part of the court cost. So it's an automatic wash because it, it is there. That money, we've been collecting for years and years already on a transaction fee, but we've never used the iTicket from the state to download those tickets. So I know that J P Four is interested in doing it. I'm certainly interested in, in using this new technology. I think it's the, the way to go simply because it's going to cut down on having an employee input those tickets where there are often, and sometimes mistakes made. Also, just the technology's much quicker. We have those tickets immediately in our office that morning we upload that. So there's just a couple of different ways that we can use the, you know, latest technology. There's no fee for Net Data to update our systems, to put that in and, and get it ready to go. It's, it's just waiting for Net Data to come do that for us.
So let me ask you then, a D P S officer out here on the loop issues a ticket, and before you doing this automatically with the iTicket, you, somebody's got to go pick that up from D P S, the, the ticket at the end of the day, or?
Right. Well, you know, depending on when the officers drop off, a lot of times, if they are ending their shift, they may take their ticket home, have the day off the next day, so don't turn it in for a day or so. But most of the judges go every day to the D P S office and pick those tickets up, and so any tickets that are in our boxes, we bring those back to the office, and then they're inputted into the system.
So somebody's got to drive over there and pick it up, and, and the two dollar charge is being taken out right now?
Yes, sir.
So this would be basically where you don't have to get up from your desk, it just comes in?
Correct.
Got a question? Will you need bill?
Yes, the, on Net Data, we bill it monthly.
Now, your, the two dollar fee, you already have those in miscellaneous revenue.
Correct.
When you like, they're a part of your fee sign and court cost, so you just need to budget that because that's revenue and expenditures office is separate part of the budget. But you, you have any idea of about what it costs per month for office? How many tickets do you get from D P S on weekly expenses?
Probably, well, it varies from office to office. I talked with the commissioners and the judge, and the, like, for about a year, Judge Tuggle had about fourteen hundred tickets, I had over a thousand tickets, Judge. Because Theo had about eight hundred tickets, and Judge Howell had about, I think it was like six, fifty, seven hundred tickets, but that was a yearly.
Right. And the transaction fee you've been charging forever?
Yes.
Which was for a different purpose in the beginning?
Well, I'm not sure what it was used originally for, and I know, I know it's always gone into the general fund.
The purpose of it was just, you handle the ticket.
Right.
That's what it was for.
Okay.
So if you don't want.
I mean, it's transaction fee, transaction fee to actually handle the ticket and get all that goes with that.
So, hey, Becky? So I'm having trouble understanding the difference between charging two dollars to go personally handle the ticket and charging two dollars to have it come straight into your terminal. What's, what difference does it make?
Well, you're going to be, you're going, it's going to be a wash, I guess, if they pay the ticket, if they pay everything on the ticket, which is the two dollar transaction fees on there.
Well, we're not worried about that for this discussion, though, whether they pay or not.
We have to have a line account to pay for this from. We don't have a line account to pay for this. We have something we have to, to talk about and how you want to pay for this.
And I did.
I guess I'm missing something.
This morning after this meeting, I didn't know this was going to be on this morning. So after I talked with the, I immediately called Becky and asked to have a meeting, which is going to take place this, this morning.
But you seem to be aware that if you approve this, this money will come out, we have to have an expenditure line account for, for them to pay from when we receive the bill. You can't go back and hit the revenue account with a bill. I have to create a line account and get with a budget.
So it's basically a ledger change, right?
Well, it's more than that because you have.
You've lost me.
Well, if you start this, and let's say you start this June 1st, and you get a bill July 15th for June, where am I paying that from?
Where's it going in the first place?
Well, if, I don't think you could.
The two dollars goes, but two dollars is being collected for handling a ticket, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well.
We haven't had to pay that money to anyone in the past. It's just part of overall revenue. So it goes into a revenue line account, it's revenue. But now, you will be billed that two dollars for every ticket that you upload, and when you get the bill, we need a place to pay for it from.
So that's an extra two, okay, so let me get this straight. So that's just an extra two dollars you're collecting off the people that are getting the tickets, right?
If you collect it. And I, whatever you gentlemen decide for me to do is fine, I just want you to have all the facts and understand that this is not a cost that we have budgeted.
Okay, each, I know that some of the other J Ps didn't want to do it, because is it okay to just have one J P or two of them do it and the other two don't?
They go separate anywhere more than likely because the number of tickets will vary, so I'm sure that that office will get their own unique billing. So however you want to do it.
Hey, Judge, would you like to table this until y'all have a meeting and discuss this more?
I mean, that would be fine with me.
Because you didn't know this was coming.
Uh, no, I didn't know. I, I.
Give them more time to get you ducks in a row.
Right, exactly. I wasn't going to put it on the, you know, agenda, you know, until after I had spoken with Becky.
Right.
I, I did not know it was going to be, you know, I apologize.
And again, it's something that you could initiate October 1st, where the budget is in place too, and that way you don't have to come up with monies now because, just because, I mean, you're not going to collect every ticket, so you're not, it's not going to be a wash. Does that make sense?
I like to table this until we get more information and get you ducks in a row. I like to make a motion to table this until further date.
A motion to, maybe I, Commissioner Dever to table the I T ticket agreement with Net Data.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. We will table it. Okay, item number 12. Discuss Hood County appraisal district election process for board members in light of Attorney General opinion, K P 0287. Dr. Glenn.
Bringing a whole sheet and box up here, uh-oh.
I hope I don't have to read that.
I promise I'm not going to go through that entire thing. I don't want to do that to everybody, I'm sure.
You've made a good attorney, Dr. Glenn. That is always really scares trial judges when you come in with big notebooks like that, they go, oh my God, so you got my attention.
Again, it's, it's mostly background information. Before I begin, though, let me say that I've had the opportunity, just in the last few weeks, have the privilege to be around Miss Kid and a couple of financial meetings, and you guys got a real gem in her. She is a fool when it comes to looking after the county's money, so this resident, I appreciate that.
We've been in on those meetings.
You guys understand that pretty well.
Yes, we do.
So I, I appreciate, first of all, let me apologize that you're having to deal with this. I know you have more pressing issues, so I'm going to be as brief as possible. I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to thank you guys. I know that you work hard for the taxpayers of Hood County. I see Captain Webster in the back, the sheriff, the constables, our first responders, since we have our mayor, Mayor Proten here, and of course, our county and district attorney, and truly through this whole pandemic, on behalf of school, let me thank everybody. We don't always agree, but we always work together for the betterment of Hood County, and I appreciate that. So a little background information, we were asked to come and speak today, and I just want to kind of update you on where we're at. Some of you who have been on the commissioner's court for a while know that this actually started back when Judge Cochran was a county judge, and Becky and I have had a few conversations about it. When I came on board, it was not that I was looking to pick a fight with the appraisal board, there are certainly many pressing issues in the school district, but background from where I'm at, our school board ran into a couple of issues, and so I put those issues under tab one for you. The first issue came, it was part of our retirement benefit, and so as you guys know, between Hood County, Granbury I S D, and the city, which is here today, we pay just around ninety-three cents out of every dollar spent through the appraisal district. The bottom three of the 11 entities, which would be Bluffdale I S D, Glenrose I S D, and Rodley I S D, which aren't even in Hood County, they make up about one and a half percent, so one, one and a half cents of every dollar spent. It becomes an issue for us whenever the appraisal district looks to go out and make large purchases, and we end up paying ninety-three percent of that, and the other entities which have the same voting entitlement as we do, it really does affect their budget. So, but that's the way it was agreed upon in 1988 as part of a resolution. From our board standpoint, where it really became an issue is when the chief appraiser put in place a retirement benefit, and I included under tab one a letter that he sent to Dr. Larson, who was superintendent at the time, and really, if you just kind of go to the last page, I kind of highlighted that last sentence that said Granbury I S D, a portion of the three hundred thousand prior to the monetary credit was a hundred and fifty-five thousand. What, what they didn't really go on to explain is kind of shop our board a little bit, is we were paying that sum over a five-year period, so we continue to pay. It may sound like it was a one-time payment, but we're just now getting to the point where we're through with it. And the chief appraiser, the largest portion of this, of this pension went to the chief appraiser, so that was in 2017, he just retired, so two years after, it's proven he retired. And I only bring that up because when you make someone hold in their pension at the very end, I'm, I'm working for the pension in the I S D, but I started paying on that pension in 2000. Imagine if I were to go 25 years in my career, and in the 25th year, the board trustees said, you know, we're going to take taxpayer money, we're going to make you hold, and two years later, you can retire, and you're going to have a pension for the rest of your life. That's essentially what we did in Hood County, and our board, Dr. Larson at the time, tried to, to stand up and say, hey, we don't feel like this is right, and he just, he went through anyway. So the second thing was, was last year in the city, luckily caught this one, the appraisal district, which is in Miami, and so they were looking at a two to three billion dollar facility, Hood County Appraiser at the time, Mr. Stewart actually jumped out and purchased the land, the city caught it, and the, I don't know if the sale was canceled, or if the sale went through and then they just kind of went through and resold, but I really don't have the background on that. I know as far as the school district goes, we were to purchase something, and then we were to turn around and sell it again. There are requirements to go through with selling, but I put it here because I don't have a lot of information on it, but I know that the city of Granbury, touching that land purchase in advance, ended up being, being good for H C A D and the county because I think it kept us out of a lot of the legal issues. And so, and again, I'm going to speak longer on this first section than any other section. And then finally, last year, there was miscalculation, and it affected our budget by a fortune of about three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And again, I bring up this kid and how closely she watches your money, three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for the H C A D budget is about twenty, a 20% error. So imagine if you were in Vegas, you get three fiscal, three months left in your fiscal year, and all of a sudden you catch an error of 20%. That did our budget pretty hard, and certainly you wonder how they can go through the majority of their fiscal year without catching a 20% error. And I think now kind of strong broke the camel's back with us, and our board said, look, we've got to give representation because this is, this is costing us a lot of money. And, and I'm not here to pick on the appraisal district, I think at the end of the day, maybe they're just getting some bad legal advice, and so just real quickly, I'm going to run through the other tab. I appreciate Matt Mills, he did file an A G opinion to try and determine whether the 1988 and 89 resolutions were valid, so I put in there for your reading pleasure, a House Bill 1010, which was passed in 2007, which redefined how appraisal district is supposed to be elected. I also put in there the I S D's rescension of the resolution and the applicable tax codes and current voting entitlements. That's important because under tab three, the attorney for the appraisal district, the same attorney that told them they could purchase the property without consent of the entities, the same attorney that helped him with the retirement benefit, and the same attorney that oversaw the accounting errors, issued a response to Mr. Mills's A G opinion, and he outlined their case in that response. The attorney general had the opportunity to review H C A D's position as well as Mr. Mills's brief, and then Tim Paxton, Michigan attorney, essentially saying, an opinion, essentially saying that the way that the board directors is being elected in the counties and leave. From there, Walter Paulberry submitted a, another report, all the entities, and I'm going to assume it's ghostwritten, but since Mr. Paulberry's not here to tell me whether it was or not, I'll, I'll disprove the fact that maybe he wrote it, but the language is nearly identical to the language that Mr. Evans, their attorney, put in his response to the A G. The only difference was he did, he did point out the voting entitlement, which again, Tim Paxton had the opportunity to look at because Matt Mills included that in the original opinion. So no new information has, has come from the, from H C A D as it relates to the A G opinion. And then finally, where we are today is Matt Mills did send, send a letter out to the board with questions and complaints, a form of Lonzo, and you have that document as well. Had the opportunity to speak to our new chief appraiser, Eddie Rose, and keep the letter kind of in the pocket off to the side. Where we're at today, and what we kind of have peace with as a district is, the old chief appraiser is gone, we have a new chief appraiser in place. Elections, according to state law, are supposed to be held a odd number of years, which means that next year, we're supposed to have an election anyway. Our plot, just for peace, as we all kind of through much larger problems right now with this pandemic, would be to, to allow the current board to set in place until elections take place next year, and then prevent them from being compliant with Texas Tax Code 6.03. So that's, that's where we sit. However, if we were to do that, they could be essentially a de facto board, so if they made a decision and someone decided to challenge that decision, there could be legal recourse. With that, I'll answer any questions. Also, our board president, Mark Jackson's here, again, I'm just a vessel on the board, they, they are the governing body.
We don't have any large purchases looming out there, do we, by the appraisal district?
No, no.
That's, that would be the only bad thing. That would be the only bad thing that we could get nailed upon, because the school district pays about what percentage of the...
We're around 60%, and y'all are around 25%. So, and that's the exact numbers in that package.
Could you imagine, Judge, just for a moment, they go out and build a $3 million facility? In our case, we get handed a bill of $1.8 million, and we never had a say in that facility. There's proper pro calls set according to statute where they had to get the entities 30 days' notice, and a lot of things had to happen. It was a lot of plan. Now, and the other comment I'd make is, back to Dr. Glenn, I was on board in '17, '18, '19 when we got these bills. And you can imagine, as a commissioner's court, if you got a bill and you were two months shy of your fiscal year ending, it's quite an awakening. One was to, as he said, and they called a retirement. But the other was a, quote, "miscalculation." And to me, that's just incompetence. And I'll just say it. I think if it were me, I would ask that board to resign and reformulate it now. But in order for peace and to try and find a fortunate resolution, we're willing to let this ride until the next election cycle. At that time, it needs to be on a pro-rat election basis, like all the counties around us and the majority of counties in the state. And I know I talked to Commissioner Eagle and yourself briefly about this, but this has been something that's been going on for two-plus years that needs to come to a stop.
To backfill a pension plan like that, I've never, I've never seen that before.
No, I mean, I can, I remember going to their end-of-the-year meeting two years ago, and they ended up with a surplus of about $450,000. And the board voted to put that surplus in their retirement program. And that didn't sit real well with me, but that's what they did. So I agree that need to get it, get the situation statutorily correct. But if you guys are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a comment here. I represent pretty much three school districts. I've got La Pan, Toler, and Granbury. And the way I'm looking at it, y'all won't take all the control away from La Pan and Granbury, La Pan and Toler, where they won't have a say in this. That's the way I'm reading it.
Commissioner Deaver, if I may, I think an appropriate analogy is, given as a corporation, if you were an investor, you had a 60% stake in that corporation, would you not at least want to see on that board?
I mean, sure.
Well, and that answers the question. If all we want is a voice on that board, we don't have a voice right now. We could have seen some of these things coming, but instead, we were sidelined by them. And so that's all we're asking, is a seat at the table. We're not asking for three of those five seats. I don't think that would ever happen. We're just asking for a voice.
That's what I've been hearing, is going down the road, y'all are going, well, majority, and that's okay. But you're going to cut out the small districts, Toler and La Pan, because Hood County is the second-largest taxing entity, right? You've got Granbury ISD, Hood County, and the city of Granbury. Then you go back to the little school districts.
Yes, sir. And I understand and respect what you're saying, but what you're talking about is taxation without representation. So you're asking Granbury ISD to step back.
No, I'm not asking that. No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
I'll say this, at the very least, they're not following the law. So surely, you don't have a problem with someone complying with the state law of Texas?
No, I don't. But I'm going to go back to you. The way this thing sets out, y'all are going to have pretty much all the majority, Granbury and Toler and La Pan maybe have a 0.1%, 0.5% representation in it. That's not right either. I agree with what you said a while ago. Excuse me. If y'all, how many board members is there? Five or seven?
On the resident board, ISD, five.
Five. So y'all get four, Hood County gets one, Granbury gets 0.1%, 0.5%. Where's it going to leave the little school district? I agree, y'all should have representation. I'm not doubting that. It's going to leave the little school districts without any say at all.
Not necessarily. Because the Texas Tax Code 6.031 does allow for the taxing entities to come together and set up a system where the smaller districts can have their say.
I'm not doubting you on, y'all should have majority. I agree with that. I just don't want the little guys to get completely cut out.
And again, we just want to be able to, if someone's going to spend $2 million, we just want to be able to say, "Hey, this is how it's going to affect taxpayer, Granbury." And I apologize for getting heated about it, but it's a lot of money, because it's employees that I have to cut whenever we're talking about $3 and $4 million worth of purchases by the appraisal district. And 80% of our budget is sour. And so when you're telling me that I have to give money to backfill a pension for somebody that's been paying a pension for 20 years at the expense of employees and benefits for current ISDs, I apologize for that. But at the same time, we're spending the majority of the money.
I'm not doubting that, sir.
Having a vote, having a say, having our board president get a phone call returned by the chairman of the appraisal board, I don't think that's too much to ask.
I'm not doubting that.
Certainly, there should be some oversight. And if La Pan and Toler are the oversight, there's at least cause to maybe look into some of these issues, because again, we're talking about taxpayer money. And if this were my pension and this was done, that's a gift of public funds under Texas Education Code. I don't know what it is under the appraisal district code, because I don't look in. I just scratched the surface on this. But surely, if you look out for the taxpayers of Hood County, it should concern you just a little.
It does. I'm not saying it does.
Don't even tack me at that comment there, sir. I fully do not like that. I am for all the taxpayers, but I gotta look out for the little guys, too. So don't even go there, buddy.
You have anything else to say?
I think the county attorney may have a couple of...
Jump in with one more thing that wasn't mentioned in all this. So they, after the AG opinion came back on January 21st, then they started asking whether I would file a full warrant-toe suit, and that's in your packets there. And so I said, "Well, you know, I would contemplate doing that if your lawyer basically did the work for me," which their lawyer did. And so they prepared the shell of a full warrant-toe suit. Now it sounds like they're fine, and I wasn't looking for another fight, believe me, but they're fine with delaying that. I just want to let y'all know that we have the workings of a full warrant-toe suit, which is basically a suit to remove improperly-elected officials, which I think, based on the AG opinion, it would be granted if we wanted to move forward with it. But the school being the primary injured party in all this, if they say, "Hey, we'll just wait till the vote next year, then I'll just pull back from filing suit." I haven't filed anything. I just, I sent out letters to the board members, and so I can just kind of pull that back and wait. But I want to make sure that the board and everybody of the appraisal district is all in line with having the statutorily correct election process next fall. And so if they're okay with, you know, doing it correctly next fall, then I'm certainly fine not picking another fight and just not filing the full warrant-toe suit. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, that's pretty much a nuclear option, right, the full warrant-toe?
I think it'd be granted.
I agree.
Someone dared us to do it in that letter from Mr. Baldry, saying, you know, "We might see you in district court," and so on. Well, okay, here we go. But I'm more than happy not seeing them in district court either, you know. If we, if the school is okay as the primary injured party in this waiting till the fall next year, then that's kind of me. So that's just an update on the legal side of that suit.
Yeah, how will we know, Matt, whether or not the district will agree to the new rules? When or how will we know?
I don't think we really know, Commissioner Cotton. Again, communication has been somewhat disjointed. The only member on their five-member HCAT board that I have regular communication with is Bert Skudson, who I consider a friend. Look, right now, the five-member board, there's three members from Toler and one from La Pan on that board. All we're asking is for a voice on that board. It's disproportionate the other way right now. We are willing to wait till next year as long as we move to the proper pro-rat election, which is support civil law. A vast, vast majority of counties in the state follow, including all the ones around us. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I can answer your question. I'm sorry. And Commissioner Deaver, I apologize if my comments were not meant to...
And I apologize, too. I do take taxpayers, I do. I care about, I'm a taxpayer, too. And I don't appreciate you saying, "I do not care about taxpayers."
It was out of bounds, and I apologize. I know you're a fight for Hood County. To answer your question, Mr. Cotton, I did speak with Eddie Rowe. He has voted to the appraisal board and made an agreement with this proposal in the letter I presented. So how would it happen if the taxing entities were approved by a resolution?
Again, I'm trying to thought. What I wanted to tell this court is, over the last 10 to 12 years of the way they followed this, in addition to these three major situations that occurred, there are other things that we're not even sure about, what they've done, that they follow the law. One of the things is how they assess their fees to the number of entities. By our calculations, the county alone probably lost over $1 million over that time period because you were overpaying. While the school district, quite frankly, was underpaid, we were paying about 50% of the fee base, and we should have been paying closer to 60%. So we well know, by asking this, bringing all this to light, that the school district eventually is going to be paying out more in fees to the appraisal district, while the county is going to realize savings. So that's a key point to make, along with these other things we pointed out. That yes, I would call incompetence, and I don't know where it lies, and I'm not pointing fingers. Again, some of those board members are my friends or I know them. But all we're saying is, we need to right this shit up now, brand, you know, fall of next year, but we will right it, and we will have a voice at that table. And it's not about a takeover. Hell, the last thing I want is a seat on that HCAT board where you can't be, that have to point ARB and buy taxpayers on the property values. I don't want this and all that. Enough phone calls as it is. So, again, we just want to see things coming down the pipe next and not miss that one. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I'd like to add something.
Yes.
You just can't lower it. There we go.
The light is on. I am not trying to cause any problems, which is a good day for me. This apparently has been a train wreck for a while. But we did have a meeting. The judge was there. The esteemed Dr. Glenn was there. Mr. Rowe was there. And one of the, one of the issues that came up was, "Are you going to give your employees raises?" He indicated that he will. And that's when the tiger came out in me because of the current economic situation and the pandemic that we're all in the middle of. I point-blank said I didn't think that was prudent, because y'all all know I don't mince words. And he said he's cut half a million dollars off his budget, and he's hiring five employees. I'm bringing this up so that you all know what you're getting into when they come with their dollars. Okay? Just want you aware of it.
Thank you.
Well, we don't need to do any kind of a motion on this. This is just a good discussion. Thank you, Dr. Glenn, for...
Appreciate it.
...up it down here. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Kidd. Okay, let's move on to item number 13.
Judge, I'm going to request just to take that off.
Okay, good.
That issue's been resolved.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Okay, item number 14, consider and take appropriate action for a resolution declaring Hood County a sanctuary county for all businesses.
Now, this is my agenda item, and I'm going to ditto what Ms. Kidd just said. I'm not trying to cause any problems here. And in light of what Commissioner Deaver said, fighting for the little guy, I felt compelled to at least make another run at this and from a different, from a different angle. And I'll just, all I'm going to do is read this into the record, and then we can vote it up or down, except for this. Two weeks ago, the city of Attwater, California, California, they passed a resolution, they made national news, that basically said that they're a sanctuary city for small businesses. And I've shamelessly plagiarized their resolution, and I tweaked it for Hood County, so I'm going to read it into the record. Resolution declaring Hood County sanctuary county for all businesses. Whereas Hood County, Texas recognizes that the Constitution of the United States, as well as the Constitution of the state of Texas, enshrines certain rights of all Americans, including those fundamental liberty interests set forth in the 14th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution that prohibits the state from depriving any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Whereas Hood County recognizes that the U.S. and Texas declarations of independence advance the inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness in the face of tyrannical governmental overreach. And whereas each of the Hood County duly elected and appointed public servants took a sacred oath to preserve, protect, and defend the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of the state of Texas. And whereas recent state and county orders have been issued, which have deemed certain businesses as essential, and ordered all other businesses to stay shuttered, closed, and/or unreasonably restricted, forcing said businesses to do whatever they can to fight for their very economic survival and livelihood. And whereas Hood County welcomes, honors, and respects the contributions of all businesses and employees of said businesses, regardless of their size, and regardless of whether they have been deemed essential by some government decree or not. And whereas Hood County's diverse and entrepreneurial businesses positively create to the economic, cultural, and social fabric of the county. And whereas all businesses in the county have not only been a catalyst for the county's economic health, but have been the backbone of the county throughout its long history. And whereas Hood County businesses are socially responsible and are capable and willing to maintain effective health protocols to ensure that Hood County remains one of the strongest COVID-19 success stories in Texas, think a total of 25 right now, cases. And whereas fostering a relationship of trust, respect, and open communication between county officials and businesses is essential to the county's mission of delivering effective public services in partnership with the community, thereby advancing a high quality of life for local residents. And whereas Hood County seeks to foster trust, not fear, between county officials and businesses and citizens, while properly allocating limited local resources and encouraging cooperation and open communication to ensure public safety and due process for all, irrespective of business status. And whereas Hood County desires to demonstrate its commitment to its businesses and citizens by providing a safe community and by assuring them that, in accordance with federal and state laws and all state licensing authorities, the county will not, of its own accord, abridge such freedoms and rights. And whereas U.S. Attorney General William Barr issued a memorandum on April 27, 2020, declaring that the Constitution is not suspended in times of a crisis. And whereas the Texas Supreme Court in Enray Salam de Alamoade et al., number 20-0340, states in the first sentence of its ruling, "The Constitution is not suspended when the government declares a state of disaster," citing another case, Enray Abbott. Whereas Hood County recognizes and honors the inalienable rights of individuals, as individuals, to earn a living, to employ others or be employed, to provide income for their families, to give back to the community, to treat neighbors with respect and care, and to contribute to the overall health and well-being of the community without the need for undue government overreach, coercion, and control. And whereas on October 8, 2019, in this very commissioner's court, Commissioner James Deaver put forth a motion to approve a resolution declaring Hood County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary county, which was seconded by Commissioner Eagle and was approved unanimously by this commissioner's court. And whereas Hood County elected and appointed leaders are the last bastion of hope to defend the rights of citizens in Hood County. to defend the rights of citizens in Hood County. And to stand on behalf of the citizens of Hood County to ward off tyrannical government overreach, therefore be it resolved that Hood County shall, Hood County shall not, in accordance with state and federal law, and in order to properly allocate limited local resources and optimize cooperation and communication to ensure public safety and due process for all, irrespective of business status, actively join forces with other agencies solely for the purpose of enforcing state or county COVID-19 orders. And be it further resolved that Hood County shall not, in accordance with state and federal law, take any direct action against any business, any businesses or individuals based solely on their actual or perceived business status. And be it further resolved that Hood County recognizes that state and county authorities directly license, permit, and regulate certain businesses within the county. And nothing in this resolution is intended to abridge such authorities from overseeing applicable license regulations and restraints, if any, on such businesses. And be it further resolved that, subject to the foregoing, Hood County hereby declares that Hood County is a sanctuary city, sanctuary county for all businesses. Adopted, I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Dr. Granik, I think you filed for, do anything to, you wanted to discuss this?
Am I the only speaker?
Excuse me?
Will I be the only speaker?
Yes. Yes, you're the only speaker.
Okay.
I'm an aficionado of cartoons and they always seem to come at appropriate times. In this morning's newspaper, there's a Garfield cartoon where John, if those who are familiar with it, addresses Garfield and says, "Garfield, what are you going to do about the mouse problem?" And Garfield holds, holds up a sheet of paper and John says, "There are straining order? That's it." And Garfield said, says, "End this bill from, for $500 for my attorney." Here we go with another sanctuary thing. We have laws in this state and this country, and we have higher courts that decide the constitutionality of it, of that. I noted in the last 24 hours, Shanghai, which is very restrictive, has had seven deaths out of 21 million people, roughly 10% of the United States population. United States is, if we haven't reached it by the time I'm speaking, greater than 100,000 deaths. The commissioner's court has tampered down things and used good judgment. And that's why we have only 25, or certainly one of the reasons we have only 25 coronavirus places here. I think that you're doing a great job, this, making this a sanctuary county. Why don't we do it an anti-sanctuary county for feral hogs and for rabid skunks and see how, how well that does. I'm sympathetic with the economic difficulties of businesses in this county and the people, how it's affected. But I'm also sympathetic with keeping down a second wave in this country. If Commissioner Eagle finds this as a personal issue, he is a lawyer, he can address that at personal things. But I don't want to see county taxes going, this ramification of county taxes going to this kind of problem. We've recognized that five years ago, we had that issue. And I think that we, the county has more important things than these resolutions. That's, I think you are doing a great job. I hope that this resolution doesn't get supported and y'all continue to do the kind of good job y'all have been doing. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the resolution declaring Hood County a sanctuary county for all businesses?
Judge, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, hey, you know, I'm born to get in a fight with Commissioner Eagle. I know that he has an opinion, everybody else does too. But he started out with a quote that he got from Atwood, California. Guess what? We're Texas, we are not California, thank God. My personal belief and opinion that Governor Abbott is doing the right thing. So we're following Governor Abbott, Dr. Halistat, David Blocker, their advice on how we should open safely Texas and Hood County. So, you know, Governor Newsom from California, I think he got a lot of flack and that's probably why Atwood did what they did. Because he's a Democratic governor, that's the way it is. So that's all I've got to say, Judge.
Any other further discussion? Okay, Commissioner Eagle has made a motion to adopt the resolution that he's read into the record declaring Hood County a sanctuary county for all businesses. Is there a second? There being no second, the motion fails for lack of a second. Okay, let's move on then to item 15, discuss and take appropriate action to allow departments in need to apply for federal grants through the CARES Act.
Judge, Commissioners, this is just a formality for any department so that we're not coming back every court to add another department in Hood County that wants to apply for any portion of this that they deem is going to help their department. We know that the Fire Mar, I'm sorry, Jay Webster is working in conjunction with several of us to capture some funds from this, and the library is also one of the other ones. So this is just to cover any department that can glean any kind of monies from the CARES Act. So I just, a motion to allow any department that deems necessary to put forth whatever paperwork CARES needs in order to receive funding from them.
Shall they contact Jay Webster first and he's got the proper paperwork?
No, you see him, he couldn't shake his head fast enough.
Well, we just, he's got broad shoulders, we can load him up with them. He's got all the paperwork that everybody needs, do you not? Who do you suggest? How do we proceed with these grants, then, Mr. Webster?
Come on down.
So I was talking to Becky before court. A lot of this, there's a lot of confusion is you have the Big CARES Fund Act, which I've provided everybody with the big packet. Some of y'all I've actually had time to run by and talk to. And I've talked to Becky and some of the other ladies about. The library has their own CARES Act fund. It is through the library itself, which is their own process, their own application, everything else. And so I would like to not be involved in those specific type fund requests because she obviously knows what the library is about, what it needs to do, and how it needs to be filled out. And so I don't want to get involved in that if I don't need to be, just kind of like the elections stuff that Cricket was working on and everything like that. But there is some confusion, and that's why I was talking to her about is there, there's the Big CARES Fund Act. And then unfortunately, under some of the other little acts, they're still calling them the Library Funds Care Act and stuff like that.
This just allows it to move forward because all grants or any, any state or federal monies need to come through court if you're going to request it. Are you in agreement with any department moving forward to try to recapture some funds? And I believe you all are. So this just is a broad coverage of anyone so that we're not back every court in going through this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Is there a deadline for these?
They'll have different deadlines.
So I was just hoping to cover that, just to help her is, yes, some of them are like May 31st. Some of them are this Friday and some of them are, you know, after we meet again. So some of them are coming up where they're, if they don't get the application in before our next commissioner court, then they wouldn't be eligible to get those. And I think hers is, is one of them for the library.
Right.
I got a question. I think, I thought I heard from either Jennifer Logston or you that through the CARES Act for the library, it was a percentage. You're going to apply for certain things, but you don't really get back 100% of what, excuse me, of what you pay. I thought that was my understanding. And we were talking to Jay, maybe that's wrong or right, but I heard that. But I would want to verify, these other grants, if through the COVID-19 reimbursement we're going to get from the state, which could be somewhere, I better not quote a number, but it's a big number. I understand that if, whatever we can identify that we've spent on COVID-19 issues, we can get 100% of that back, isn't that correct, Jay?
On the treasury funds, that's correct, yes, sir.
So don't we have to be careful of applying for these other, you can't have both. If you apply for these other grants, if it has to do with COVID-19 and you don't get 100% refund, wouldn't we be better off going with your direction?
Well, that's, that's what we're doing.
Oh, I thought you.
It was FEMA, he's talking about the FEMA year.
Right, the FEMA is a 75% reimbursement only for overtime that's directly, directly related to COVID and products, and it's only 75%. So we will not utilize that when we can get 100% from CARES.
I think we're saying the same thing then.
Well, the library, I don't know anything about the library one.
And I'm either.
That she specifically, the library, and is specifically asking for. On the one that Cricket was looking at that went to you for signature on Friday, when I look back at that, we had to come up with an additional $13,000 to match that.
Right.
So I was telling her, why do we want to give up money to match something when I can cover Cricket's costs with what we're talking about on the Big CARES Act? But on the library fund, I don't know anything about it to answer that question specifically on that.
And if it's singled out as part of this CARES purposely, specifically for the library, then we can include it in what we're doing anyway. But I will get with her and make sure that all of her ducks are in a row.
Okay, yeah.
But we just need to make sure that you're aware of it and bless this.
I'll just make the one comment is that I would look at, we apply for any grant that allows us to be 100% without having to match it. Or even if it's 75, it doesn't cost us any money that other departments can look at getting on top of. At the end of the day, if they get approval to get that grant and then we find out that it's in conflict with the CARES, then we just turn it down. But at least we were able to ask for it.
Okay.
Good. That's what, we want Hood County businesses and all individuals, all departments, anybody that's entitled to receive this money to make us whole from the damages, to make sure that we really get the money to do that. And I think both of you are doing an excellent job about staying on top of that.
Thank you.
So we want, I'd rather write a check and we give them, give somebody back the money than be cut short, you know? I've always liked to write something. So y'all doing an excellent job and we're putting it out to all the departments to keep records. If you had any expenses in any way for COVID-19 that you wouldn't normally have, give that and let's see if we can get compensated for it.
And we're on top of that.
We, yes, I really appreciate that. Y'all doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, both of you. Okay, I don't think we need to make a motion on that, it's, do we? Okay, yeah, just.
No action.
Yeah, no action, okay.
Ray, you have to allow us to report on the CARES, all grants and monies have to come through, I've had approval.
Oh, through the, okay.
Judge, I'll make a motion to allow all departments in need to apply for federal grants through the CARES Act.
To do so. Yeah, okay, I'll second that motion. Okay, the motion has been made and seconded by Commissioner White to allow departments in need to apply for federal grants through the CARES Act, seconded by Judge Massengill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, item number 16, discuss and take appropriate action to address Garland Company on an outstanding PO for Annex 2. Mr. Jay Riley.
How are y'all today?
Yes, sir, I remember you.
Sterling.
Let me give you a real quick update on where we're at and then we'll go from there. We did Annex 3, and this is only about Annex 3. Annex 2 is taken care of, everything matched perfectly on that. So on my billing, I had made a mistake telling y'all we were complete. So I misspoke. When I was doing, going back and looking at the POs that were paid, I had one outstanding PO that had not been paid. That PO was number 28292 for the sum of 16,946. So I got the question in it, I called, you remember Russell from workshop? Talked to Russell, I said, "This PO doesn't make sense." Looked at the bill and basically what this for was for, was for the roof restoration, where we had the bad metal on the roof. So I've asked, I've had, I'll be honest with you, I've struggled with their billing process a lot. Having trouble understanding it. So I've asked him to explain it. I want a more itemized final bill because I think we do owe him money. But I'm not completely sure of how much.
Before he starts, Jay, I've been really involved on this.
Thank goodness for Drone. We had Drone taking picture of this roof. And I seen some stuff going on that roof I'm not happy with either. And we had leftover tin. I seen it stacked out there to, to do the deal. We had leftover coating to pre-coat the roof.
I did.
I know we got some money back on that, but if he said we owed him money, why did he give us money back?
Well, you want to explain?
Yeah, sure.
I'll let you do that.
It was a, the process was a little, because we, we did get the approval on June 11, 2019 to proceed. We went and got the contractor and Drone is a really good contractor. We've done several jobs together, working with him in many places right now. But when we started doing our due diligence, we did some core analysis and we found some rapid corrosion on the deck that was there. We provide a 30-year no-dollar limit warranty. In 22 years, if something happens to that, we will take it off and replace it, covering the labor, material, any other costs that come with that. To ensure we can, to ensure that that roof will stay adhered to that structure, we do our core analysis and we found that there was some rapid galvanic corrosion occurring on that metal deck. So then we started our, we started looking at options. We came back on August 13 and we explained that the metal deck was in bad shape. Whenever, we only did a 12-inch sample. Whenever we started getting prices on replacing that deck, that is a V-deck. It looks like a little V. And it's a 3/16 inch bottom and they don't even make that deck. And if they do, they have to custom make it. So it would have taken about four to six weeks, maybe eight weeks. So the contractor and I got to talking and we're like, okay, well, we got to get started on this because we are going to hit the cold season, the rain season. So we decided to go back with a liquid applied restoration, to put a metal surface back on top of the existing substrate. We did get an approval for $58,000. This was actually going to be a cheaper, an engineer, a value engineered option. It was going to expedite the process, save money. And all we, I talked to the manufacturer, my manufacturing company and I said, well, what do we need to do to make sure we have the warranty? Because that's all we're really concerned with, is making sure that roof is going to last 30 years. Because that's what you're paying for. And they said anywhere where there is the substrate you can see through or the gauge is less than 18 or 16 gauge, you would need to put a liquid applied acrylic anti-corrosive surface on it. So then we took it up a notch. Instead of doing that, we put a rust prohibitor and then we put the metal surface back on top of the deck. Now, he's right, there are some areas where we did use tin to make sure that when we were mechanically fastening the insulation per the IECC 2018 requirements and the wind uplifts, which is required by the American Society of Civil Engineering, chapter 7 through 10, we had to put some type of metallic surface that we, that would, the fastener would bite into. And that's where we put the tin. But we also put the rust prohibitor on the deck. And then we put the liquid applied surfacing, which is a metallic finish, the tin on top of it to reinforce it, and then we mechanically fastened the insulation package. So this, if we would have started the re-roof and we would have ripped off half of it and then brought you up there, that roof would have been exposed for only. that roof would have been exposed for only God knows how long. And we were trying to protect the investment, the asset, try to come together with the contractor and make a reasonable assessment, and then a judgment call to protect your dollars in the end because we have a 30-year no-dollar limit warranty, and we take it really serious. So, we wanted to make sure that we were able to achieve that, but we couldn't see the deck until we started ripping the roof off. And we didn't want to expose that building that already had several leaks. So, that's kind of how, that's why we got there. The $58,000 that was approved on August 13th, we're not going to use that. We're not going to use all that 58. It's going, it's the material and the labor combined because the labor to bring the deck up to a place where it would adhere and mechanically fasten came in around, you know, '46. It was a savings of $11,000. So, that's how that happened, and I'll, you know, it stinks when stuff like that happens because we're trying to protect the building in the end. And we're also trying to make sure you guys are holding a warranty paper that's actually good because there's a lot of people out there that give you a warranty paper and leave, and you don't hear from them again, and they just don't follow up on the projects. And that's not how we operate. So, I know, I know you're up there with us, Mr. Dever.
I was up there constantly.
Yeah.
On that roof constantly. I don't know how many times, Jay, how many times I crawl up on top of that roof? Several.
Yeah, several.
And I could see some things.
Yeah.
And to get back to the original deal, I paid three of the four POs. The only other PO I got that I had outstanding that was caught by purchasing, brought to my attention, along with Becky had also caught it, that's when I started digging, was for $16,000. I added, for $16,000. And then the invoice that you sent me over to me to look at didn't make any sense because it said 18 quantity of Rusco primer. Then it said 20 ordered of Sun Rusco VOC Top Coat Gray. That's not metal. That's nothing else.
Yep.
That was, that's the only bills I've received. I haven't received anything else.
Correct. The cooperative purchasing, the route we took, it was a little complicated. Too many people, I believe, were putting their hands on it. Annex two was one, we went through TIPS on annex two. It was beautiful. One purchase order was cut, work was done. The cooperative approach we took utilizing the contractor that was local and who was really good, needed more people to put their hands on it to make sure that we were following all the cooperative purchasing requirements. And I think that's too many, too many, you know, too many chefs in the kitchen. You know what I mean? And it just, it did get complicated, and so-
I know, and I was out there several times. There wasn't even a supervisor up there.
Well, as a manufacturing company, because I'm making sure-
I know it's not you, but I'm-
Yeah, I know. Actually, I got involved to protect the warranty, and Jay and I talked, and I'm like, you know what? This guy's going to need to go somewhere if we're going to be able to execute this.
Yeah.
And we ended up getting it wrapped up and protecting the warranty. And as Garland, we're actually going to go back and-
But that was a Garland contractor that was up there.
It was, and every now and then, you know.
All that Drone provided was overhead fixtures, and they were supposed to provide, pardon me for not knowing what it's called because I'm not a roofer, but in the oilfield, we call them inspectors. They oversee the job.
Yeah. Didn't he have that up there times?
Drone was providing that. That was totally your crew up there, right?
Well, it wasn't my crew. I don't have a crew. I'm a manufacturer's rep. I can make wreck and maintenance to the contractor, and he can pick and choose whichever one he wants.
So, did Drone hire them?
That is correct. Because as a manufacturer, we cannot put something on we sell because it can be a conflict of interest immediately.
Bottom line, how much, how much, how much do we owe?
I don't know.
I thought this was supposed to have been resolved today, of getting this number.
I know exactly what we owe.
Okay, that's why we-
I can tell you. So, the, the final amount for, now, this is if you decide to take the labor proposal. If you don't decide to take it, work's already been done. It's finished. Me and the contractor can talk about that and-
There's supposed to be another coating going on top of that roof also, right?
That, we're waiting because that Garland is paying, Garland's taking care of all of that, out of their pocket.
It's supposed to be in the deal, right?
No, this is, the deal, that, we, Garland did that out of good faith to make sure that roof-
I mean, no, it's included in-
Oh, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Should be no charge because-
No charge at all.
Yeah.
Garland's paying out of that. They're paying a hefty price to protect your roof because we don't want, we want to make sure that everything is fine and through all of the conflicts.
So, when they put the coating on, there's not going to be another-
No, sir.
Ghost bill show up.
Nope, not at all. You can count on that. That's already been approved by the VP of Garland himself. He saw the photos and goes, let's coat it, make sure the granules stay intact because Hood County will want to take care of, his words. So, the, the original amount we got approved on August 13th was 58,000. With the labor, if you decide to, because I got, I got a copy of the, of the labor through all of the cooperative paperwork. With the labor and the material, it comes to $46,864. The material, the number was approved on August 13th. To do that, I'm not sure where the funds went. It was approved on August 13th.
And here we are in May. When was the job completed, Jay? It's still not completed. We're still waiting on the coating on the roof.
Right.
When they got off that roof, what day, I mean, I was there every day. I was up on the roof every day. When did they get off the job site?
I didn't know about the labor charge until I walked in here today. All I had was the 16,000 I thought we owed.
That's what I was thinking, 16,000.
That, you know, I'll take responsibility for missing that part. But I didn't know about the third. I had no clue on that. Now, I knew there's a lot of numbers out there. I know what was approved, and I always try to bring it in under those numbers. So, I thought we were good. Even though I'd made a mistake previously on the 16, I still thought, well, we're still all right, but-
Especially when they carried off, you know, I wish I'd have took a picture of it. You always, our hindsight is always easy to look back. They had a stack of stuff out there, the coating and all that stuff that was out there. They took that back. That should have come off the bill, and I don't know if it did or not, but-
There was a credit issue. So, what I'm going to go ahead and propose to you is that if we take care of the $16,000, the, I will-
And I don't know if this is your fault or the builder, I don't know whose fault this is, but I think we're getting shafted. And I appreciate you working with us, but I don't know why these bills are just all of a sudden coming up. And when they got off the roof, the POs and stuff should have been coming in. Am I off and left field, Jay, or am I chasing rabbits?
And to be fair to Russell, this was-
And I'm not on Russell either. I mean, I think it's somewhere else.
This is DBS. This is the co-op that we worked through on that. And that's who Garland worked through, was Garland DBS. It's the most convoluted billing system I've ever seen in my entire life, and I've seen some convoluted billing systems. I mean, it's not itemized to the fact. I mean, when I'm looking at it, I'm trying to take out the labor versus the material, and I'll get some on material cost, but I don't understand what that material is. It doesn't just, like, the 16,000. That doesn't look like metal to me.
Yeah, honestly, I thought Jay was going to punch me a couple of times because I was like, man, he's upset. So, what we, so we made some, we changed our game plan. Sometimes you get kicked in the face in a job, and you got to reroute, reassess, and get to the finish line. So, moving forward, we just had a lot of discussions. I personally helped Drone get their TIPS agreement. I've walked them through the whole process because I've been with us for 20 years. And you can ask Tyler and all those guys. So, after we got them their TIPS agreement and their TIPS number, it was smooth sailing.
Yeah, but it's funny to me, annex two, right? That's yours.
Beautiful.
Not Flemish. But who did that? Who did that? Drone did it. But we had so many dabbling hands and faces on this roof over here, good grief.
And that was following some of the cooperative, there's so many rules you got to follow. And to protect you guys and protect Garland and protect Jay and everybody, it's just, there are some co-ops that are a little bit smoother than the others. And we, we married, the marriage happened in the rough co-op with Drone. Love him to death. It got better when we went to TIPS. And so, that's why I'm going to propose that it, I will, the labor stuff that came up, I'm going to go back to, I'm going to, I'm going to reassess that. I'm going to look through that.
What we need is a hard number. I mean, Jay keeps getting these bills, keep getting it, and need a good legit hard number, not some of this stuff where-
I think we go with, to the PO.
Yeah.
We stick with the PO. There's a PO cut. We just need to get that taken care of and-
The way I want to see this go is I'd like to see it itemized. I want to see it itemized. I want to see a dollar amount for everything done. So, if it's labor, I want it to state like, if it's material, I want it to show how much material we used. And I want to see it in exactly that order. I mean, the, we didn't get that in the beginning, and, you know, we try, I tried, but-
But we don't have a figure today.
I have it right here, actually. I've got it broken down by every invoice, every purchase order, every draw, every, everything. And in here references the quantities. But I really think just to put this thing to bed and move on, we probably should just stick with whatever the purchase order's out and then just move on.
Well, I've only got one.
And that's it, and you won't, you won't get another one. Because I'm going to make sure, I'm going to go back on the co-op side and get that cleaned up, but-
We're not hammering you. I mean, I'm not beating you up.
Oh, no, no, I just think, I think it was-
I just think there's something that's not right, and, and-
Yeah, I can tell you what, it's jumping, it's getting through all the hula hoops.
Alls we need, and I'm like Jay, me and Jay talked here today. We need something that says, job completed. This is your last bill. Instead of six months from now, we're going to get another bill.
No, sir.
We're going to get another bill. We need to say, job complete. Here's your last statement paid.
Right. I agree with you 100%. I'd like to put it behind me as well. I mean, the roof is performing. It looks great. It's going to look better when Garland puts the coating on.
Who will put the coating on that?
Drone.
Okay.
Drone will be putting the coating on since they put the roof on.
And that's, I mean-
And Garland's paying Drone to do that. They're not doing it for free.
Garland paying?
Garland's paying, yeah.
Yeah, but will he pay Drone to do that?
Yes, they will.
Okay.
We've been around since 1895 for a reason. You know, we work with counties across 50 states because we pony up when we have to.
I don't want to see nobody, you know, going to hold, if you, if you got it coming, it's coming. But I just, I'm not seeing all this. I might understand. I'm like Jay, I don't understand.
That's why I think we just, I think the bottom line is we just get the PO that was cut paid, and then we will handle, we'll handle it on our side because I think you're right. There was some stuff going on. I was out here every two to three days, taking photos, documenting, and I-
Oh, Jay, I'd get on, I mean, of course, I could watch, I could watch the roof 24/7 on my computer.
Yeah.
Drone had that deal. I mean, I crawled up there. I mean, they wasn't putting the coating on the roof. I'd go up there, Jay, they're not putting the coating on the roof. They're covering it off. Well, they'd rip it off, put the coating on, put the tin on.
Yeah, they called me actually, and they said-
I bet they didn't like me coming up there.
They didn't. That's why they called me. They said, Mr. Devers is up here. And I said, well, you need to rip it off then. So, I had them rip off that whole section and redo it.
I believe in doing it right, and none of this sweeping it on the carpet and going. And that's not against you. I'm not, I'm not on you.
My job right now is literally, I babysit.
Yeah.
Our warranties, make sure things are done right per the specification, per the codes, per the requirements so that the 30-year no-dollar limit warranty can be warranted.
I just think we need to get a number, and if we owe it, we owe it, and let's move on.
So, the $16,000, the PO, that material, that's all that's due. Everything else, I'm going to tell you right now, we'll-
Who's going to eat that if there is eating to be done?
Well, I think I need to go back to the co-op and let them know there's some-
Issues.
Some problems, and there was a purchase order cut.
You good with that, Jake? We're going to, we're going to owe you 16,000.
Yeah, it's going to be that PO.
I want it in writing.
Yeah, I'll actually send him-
16,946 is what I-
Well, somebody's eating $30,000.
Well, here's the thing about the $30,000. I haven't even seen a line item for it yet. I haven't seen it broken down myself. I shouldn't see it. I'm a manufacturer's rep.
It says final bill. I didn't like want to pay nothing because it says final bill.
And nothing against you, but where I have a problem with that 30,000, they were already up there putting the roof down. So, why would I pay on top of what they were already doing?
I agree. And so, I'm going to go to the data. I'm going to say, I need you to send me line item factual evidence of what occurred because, you know, I was here Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, and I'm going to ask for the data, the facts. I still haven't seen it myself.
Because basically, it was the same crew that was working up there.
Correct.
No guys changed. So, when they got their rusty piece of metal, they threw it down, piece of sheet iron, put some epoxy on it, and it was out over the top.
Well, they did send me the photos of putting the rust prohiber in the gray on there, but I'd like to see it line itemmed out, like you said, a line item for each individual task.
There's one video where they wasn't putting that coating on there, and I got, I got onto him and got a hold of Tyler. Tyler went up there, went kicking the star, whatever that styrofoam is, made them recode it.
Yeah.
They wouldn't, they were, ooh.
Yeah, yeah, you ever know, and then you, hey, I've been doing this 20 years, and it's not, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. You got to deal with someone who just wants to-
And I was watching-
Cats away, the mouse will play sometimes, and no matter how good a crew is, or sometimes you might have a guy out there. That's why I'm so involved in the jobs because I have to be out there to tell them, no, that's not right. Take it off. Or they'll call me, we'll rip it off. Because they don't get their money unless the roof goes on, and you don't get the warranty unless they put it on right. So, I'm the glue that holds it together, and I'm sometimes not the nice guy. Sometimes I'm the bad guy.
Well, what you're going to do is go back and draw us up a bill that says final. Bring it back to court, or I guess court can, I don't know. I guess you need to see the numbers before you can approve it, right? Has it come back through court before you approve it?
Well, and I'll send you my work report because what money didn't, usually allocated it somewhere.
Right.
You thought the project was done.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure that it's completely done, Jay. We have any issues with that back glass, a leak there?
Glass.
IT office?
Well, IT area.
We got a leak back?
Right around the door. Well, we had one.
Oh, by the door, right.
I'm not sure it's completely-
I would say that they've been very good at backing up the roof. That's not a problem. I don't want anybody to think that they're just trying to get away from us and that they're taking care of their roof.
But it's got a 30-year guarantee on it.
Right.
Absolutely. That's why I answer my call when there's a leak.
So, I will find out about it.
Is the work complete? No, they still got to put a coating on top of that roof.
So, the contracted work is complete. The additional work that Garland's going to do out of our pocket to ensure Hood County is taken care of has not been done yet because we just wanted to put everything to bed, be done with it, put the coating on. But I can start that coating process right now if everyone's comfortable with it.
When was the last, when was the work completed up to this point?
December. Yeah, it was completed in December. I've been fighting to get numbers for months. The COVID-19 didn't help either because now everybody's working from their home. So, that's why I just think if anything, we ask for a line item. We hold them the same standard we're all held to. Show me. Give me the documentation. If you can't provide that, we can't do anything else to help you. That's just what I'm proposing. I mean, that's what you got to do sometimes in the construction industry. If you have any other ideas or any input, I'm open, but I think that's where we're at now.
I would like y'all to look at that final bill and all being green and green.
Let the two lawyers look at that.
Three, I see Mr. Mills.
Yeah, plus Mr. Mills. Three lawyers. And we've got another lawyer back there in the back. We can have him look at it. I'll even look at it.
Yeah, four lawyers, huh?
I just want to make sure-
Maybe some criminal stuff in there, sorry.
I just want to make sure we don't have an M&amp;M lien, you know, floating in here somewhere.
A what?
A material man and mechanics lien.
No, no, there's no, there's no lien.
No, but it can be, it could be perfected potentially. That's what I'm-
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I mean-
We need to make, you know, I'm just concerned about that.
The good thing is we're working with, the good thing is we're working with a contractor who's got a backbone and character. And I've already brought that guy to many projects because he answers his phone and does what's right. So, I don't, I'm not worried about him.
Where's he from?
Granbury.
By the way.
Yeah. He's from- He's from backyard, that's why I, I feel really good about him. He's not going to come, and his grandfather, everybody knows his grandfather down here. Everywhere we go, they ask him about Dutch, or what's his grandfather's name?
That was great.
Buck Chisholm?
Buck, yeah, everybody knows Buck Chisholm, so anyways.
No fart.
What Garland Company is doing to make sure we're.
Sure. And I'm not trying to beat him up.
What you were saying in the beginning, I, I didn't know what else to unlike with you were ended up saying, but I like what you've ended up saying, and I like that you got a warrant here. So what we just need to do is to find out, break it down so that we can understand it like every other PO, and come up with a hard number. And like we said, this is a last, this is full and complete satisfaction.
A final.
Of your bill, period.
I can actually provide that to you on a letterhead with a signature as well, so that's official.
And there's any subcontractors, because I'm like Commissioner Eagle there, that we don't want any subcontractor. He's got, I forgot how many days it is after, it is that you can go ahead and file a lien, perfected lien. We want to make sure.
All these guys have been paid.
That's right.
Yeah.
Subcontractors have been paid, because they can come back.
Yeah.
We may need to take appropriate letters to send out to any kind of, to Tyler or anybody else that says, hey, did you hire anybody? Have they been paid in full? Do you have any outstanding invoices or something?
So we have to ask that question before we release any warranties. The warranty has already been released. Tyler's already proven and provided that he's paid all of his subcontractors. That just protects you guys.
Okay. And he's the only contractor, general contractor?
He's the GC, yes. That's correct.
So he did have some subcontractors?
He did have some subcontractors, and he provided all his proper documentation to release any liens, so that the warranty could be executed.
Okay.
Because Garland's got a staff, they've got two lawyers on staff, and they look over all the documentation.
I'm just like Judge, we need to make sure everybody's paid before we do the final draft on it.
I completely agree with every one of you. And so what, I've already got all the final numbers, but I'm going to put something in writing and send you a, a final number for materials. I'll discuss with the cooperative arm we used, and I'll send something to you, Jay, on a letterhead in writing, so it's an official documentation for your records.
Take, take this up at the next Commissioner's Court?
Yeah.